The April 6th date 2019, zoning Board of Appeals. We will come to order. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Allen Jackson. Mrs. Giussono Jackson. Mr. Wood Jackson. Mrs. Curley, present. Mrs. Cole.
Present.
Mr. Wood.
Present.
Mr. McElwatt.
Present.
Mrs. Carles.
Present.
Seeing we have a forum. We will proceed. I'm gonna take a reconsideration case first. 13 Park Street. 13 Park Street.
Oh, sure.
But I'll do that first, just to let you know that there's only four members can sit on this particular case.
There's only four members, is that correct?
Yeah.
Chris Grabbers wasn't in one for this case at the first.
Well, I think the four members that were here are familiar with this.
And the only thing I really have to add is, we have followed through, and I wanted to show you...
I overblown it, wouldn't you? Yes, I did. The work that's been done. In furtherance of, as you recall, this is a question of rehabbing a dwelling that I believe had been a two-family for many years, and then was used as a lodging house, and then returned to its use. And the question is how to satisfy ISD and get the required work done in the permits. And the board was gracious enough to extend us some time to do two things, which was to seek financial assistance from the Housing Authority. That application's been filed. The other was to involve ISD and Roger Ennis and a gentleman from the Housing Authority conducted an inspection. And based on that inspection, a building permit was filed to do the front porch, and work is proceeded. And that's elicited expenditures to date in doing the work that the ISD recommended, Mr. Ennis, and the Housing Authority individual who came out with him to inspect. So I think that with your cooperation, these folks have made a good faith effort to do all the things that I think address the concerns that, at least I understood that the members had about whether this property could be used as a two-family. And I would hope that, given the demonstrated effort and the fact that they pulled permits, they're working with ISD, and they're working with the Housing Authority, that you would afford them the recognition that I think they sought in the past and would seek now, which is to have the property recognized as a two-family. I don't believe there's ever been any neighborhood objections, and if anything, the church on the corner. Those folks were very supportive of this proposal. And I'm hoping for a good ending where, with your patience and their perseverance, we probably have got the right solution.
Any questions? Seems like quite a bit of work has taken place since this journey started.
I agree.
I don't have any questions. I'm fine. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Actually, we don't have to go through that. We did actually close the hearing. What is the wish of the board?
I have a motion to grant.
Motion has been made and seconded. Please call the roll.
Mr. Wood.
Motion to grant.
Mr. McElwatt.
Yes.
Mrs. Curley.
Yes, to grant.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
I'm gonna take the Joy Street case. What do we look to do? Continue that again?
Yeah.
And there was correspondence, right, with...
Yes.
Here ago? Okay. Okay, so that's case number 985314, Joy Street. Have a motion to continue that. All right, floor will make a motion. Mr. Wood will second it.
I will second it.
All those opposed, okay. So let's continue to the... The maybe...
Case seven.
Yes. Okay. Next case would be Locust 21 Hood Street. Petition of New England Rehab Partners by Attorney Sammy Vitale to permit the demolition of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling to be replaced by the construction of a new two-family dwelling with three parking spaces in the A4 apartment house district on a non-conforming lot with less than required area with a determination that such use is not substantially more detrimental than prior use.
I'm gonna try to tell you, and with me is Jim Brexton, who's the petitioner. Believe it or not, Jim's a lawyer, but he said he wanted to make an honest living, so he became a lawyer. I knew his dad well. George Brexton is a very prominent attorney in Saguas, who I had the misfortune of often being on the other side. He prevailed many a time. Jim's in the rehab business. He acquired this property on Hood Street, and in fact is interested in other properties on Hood Street. His company does this kind of work, which is to take properties that are either in a rundown condition, having been well maintained, and to rehab. And this particular one, it was determined that it was better to, in fact, build a new building than to go through the cost of taking down the garage, taking down the building, in terms of the various rehab issues that builders face. The proposal is to put a modular home, which I think fits well on the lot, in three spaces. You might, I know a moment's may of where Hood Street is. It backs up to the, I think soon to be rail trail if it progresses. It's the old Saguas branch. Jim's a Saguas guy. The Saguas branch of the B&amp;M Railroad. And so, in terms of creating more and usable space, the garage will be removed. That would free up more land. The building would have the three spacious, it'd be stated. And it's about the maximum size that can fit with respect to that lot, because the modular people had some questions about... The building comes two feet tall. They gotta be able to swing into the street and set them down. And so, that was a determination that they made. And with respect to the area, it is one in which, I think I picked up the street list to look at the associated lots. I think there's a lot next door that has a two-family on it. It's like, maybe within 10 feet of the lot size of this particular lot. But as you look at, the street list for Hood Street is characterized by what I would say, mixed residential uses. There are some threes, there are some twos, there are some singles. But basically, the lots are in, I'd say, they range from about 2,000 to 8,000. But if you did an average, I think of these lots, it'd come out about 4,800 if you looked at the street list of all of the lots. So the lot is of comparable size. I think the home would fit in well. I think it's a substantial investment, as I say, as an adjoining property. It may well bring me back here with Jim with respect to the refurbishment of that, because when he reached out to some of the neighbors, one of them engaged him in a conversation and said, "What about my lot? What if it's for me?" And so, I think that it would be a worthwhile investment in the neighborhood. You know, the city only needs new housing. It would create tax revenue. And as I say, it was done with keeping in mind what is already in the Hood Street neighborhood. And Jim's company has done rehabs, not only here, but in other communities. And I think his reputation in terms of doing this kind of work is like that of his dad, who was an excellent attorney. And I would be glad if he could answer the building questions. I'd be glad to answer any of the other questions.
Any questions?
The lot was in state. So when I look at this here, this little teeny thing is gonna be this big thing. Is that correct?
It's going to be, but well, I think he got right on the plan, though. Mr. Reed did put the comparison in the lot coverage. I'm looking at it upside down, but I think that he worked with, and he's dead. He's got the comparison in the lot coverage. And I understand, we're taking the garage. So in reality, there's gonna be as much as enough not more open space, because the garage's gonna be removed.
What is gonna be here? All rooftop?
No, no, no. No, it's a yard.
That's where the backyard goes to the railroad, which is going to be the rail trail.
This is the driveway.
Yes.
Here. And run.
There's a driveway there now.
There's an existing driveway there.
So we're gonna make that, I don't mean to... That area that you're pointing to with the building, that's all gonna be grassy.
All right, so this lot is up here. Is it right over to the grass?
No, it would go where, this patch right here, this entire, it would be grass. And this would be the yard.
On the right hand side of the house.
One question is, parking number one. How would you get, how would you access parking number one?
I believe...
What I'm explaining, I believe, about the...
Yeah, it's a parking lot, sure. I'm sorry.
Our job, we wanna make it as beautiful as possible. Just trying to maximize as much...
Yeah, so, but if this is grass...
I wanna maximize the greenery as much as possible. So I wouldn't have a problem if you wanted us to move the spaces over. I wouldn't have a problem with that at all.
Why we came to the conclusion, first of all, with the two-point lot, you need three spaces. So that's a gift. Secondly, as you know, there are design standards of spaces, all right? But, I've used this before. Great judge says, when we can't drive, hire trouble over a plane. So we looked at this, to make it work, and to make it work, and to have a balance, as I always try to strike, between the need for parking onsite and some open space. Jim wanted to keep the garage, but we determined that we couldn't make it work if you kept the garage. People prefer the closed parking. But the reality is, you gotta be able to make it swing in and a swing out. And so, the trade-off was, take down the garage, create more open space, have no problem maneuverability, put the parking spaces at the rear. And the reason that that open space is kept there is, we believe that there's a plan to do this so-called rail trail at the rear. And so, it would be contiguous and adjacent to that.
Do you see this parking space, where you...
Yeah.
I wonder if Sean, when you come down the driveway, how you get to that parking space without moving over here?
Well, you can drive over there. Whether, how you, you have gravel, you can have.
You just said it was great.
I said I was gonna maximize as much lawn as we could, but I don't know. This plan was originally done under the auspices of we're gonna keep the garage. So now the garage is out, I have no problem with this space.
So you create more open space.
That's exactly, yeah. I wanna, I mean, we obviously something else. We wanna make it as beautiful as possible.
We didn't ask for a variance on the number of spaces. We stayed with three spaces. But they have to work.
Right, right, of course. So we're gonna still free parking, which is required. You're right, it has to work. Currently, the way it's showing is a lot of...
Right, so what I was saying was, I would have no problem moving the spaces to where the yard, exactly.
So they're straight back?
Correct. I think that makes more sense. Again, originally, this was done under the auspices.
That that block, okay, was the garage that... So if you take that block out, I achieve what I need to make maneuverability. What he's saying is, you can still put three spaces and then have a block on this side. Or over there, so... You can't make a turn.
No, no, this...
You can't get three spaces.
No.
You come down and you have a turn. To make the turn, you gotta be, and you be able to move. So you can take these two spaces and put them over here. You have that in the area.
Jim, you don't have to go over the garage.
I'm sorry, sir.
You don't have to go over the garage.
No, no, no. See, this is something we, I didn't have the plan for.
We tried to make it work with the garage.
Because it's a car, it's a standard garage.
It was a flat-sized garage.
It's only a two-story, a lot.
So the garage couldn't work. Now the garage comes down, and then the question, and the other problem is, even if the garage were there, to bring in the third car, you couldn't make it to turn. So we had to make a trade-off. So we decided, we'll take the garage down. That blocks that you see was the garage.
So the needs are there, but still, like I...
So if you're... If you take these two spaces, you can come right here at the end of the driveway.
You're gonna pull right in, straight to here.
Yeah, at the end of the driveway.
So three cars, one, two, three.
No, I have to, I want this to be state.
Excuse me?
I want this to be state. I have to go...
Okay, so, there's two things. I have a problem, but I understand how... I bear some responsibility to this, okay? No, I do, because I had to file this. I was under a serious personal crisis at the time, okay? And so, I got it in, because it's building season, and builders want me to get it in. Reed did more than one plan, okay? And we ultimately come down again. I need the required parking and make sure that it can work. But there was more than one way to do that. And to get the lot state, that's easy enough.
Yeah, we're losing the substance, I mean, obviously, the correction.
Because I had a concern, and that's why, I'll tell you, my other concern was, what would you rate it? Okay, I wanted to get, and I had Ralph put, I wanted to have a... I can't tell with an eye where the percentages are. I will tell you what Ralph told me, okay? This is in the A4 district. In the A4 district, that's an apartment house district. The lot coverage requirement is 40%. You can cover up to 40% of the lot, okay? So I think we're at 33, okay? And a single-family district or a two-family district, the lot coverage requirement is at 30%. So I had to make a decision with Ralph. Do I need a variance for lot coverage? And he said, I did not, because the requirement in that district is, you can cover up to 40%. And besides, we're taking the garage, so we have more open space. So that's how we sort of arrived at that. But staking the lot, no problem. And then I think we can give it, I can see Ralph doing two variations of this to show you how three spaces can work. And you still wind up with essentially the block that had the open area. But what we wanted to do, because we had some recognition of this rail trail, there's most other things that have been wronged. We wanted to have an area open near where the rail trail's supposed to go. And that's at the back.
So let me ask you a question. The print, they don't show any steps, porches, decks?
The problem, that's a modular home, so it comes 95% done on like a prefab. We put the steps in and everything like that, and all of them were the building code. That's what, the company that produces the modular, that's what they produce. We produce the end product, which is the...
I'd like to see, like, you're gonna have an overhang over the doors, you know? This is just too plain. You know, we like, you know, we like, like, you're gonna have two doorways in the front of the house. What's the steps gonna look like? You're gonna have a little porch? Are you gonna have a deck on the back?
No, we're not gonna have a deck on the back.
No deck on the back?
I think that the other concern I had, and I did charge Ralph about this, yeah.
Yeah, we definitely want to see, especially with upland, see that the front stairs, how far it comes up.
And that was the concern I had, where I'll put that...
Ralph put, if you look on the plan, they're... Oh, that's right, put the dimension, I'm sorry. If you look at Ralph's before and after, I believe you put the dimensions are on there. It comes up 10 foot.
Yeah, and I have a staircase, because that's a count, terms of...
Yeah, we're not gonna, we're not gonna...
It's not a common sport, it's not...
So one other question. Are you putting a full basement in here?
I have not, we haven't worked at the foundation plan yet.
Are you gonna do it?
I'm gonna put as big a basement as we permit it is.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, you would wanna maximize the utility of, as far as people being able to access. I lived in a slot for a couple of years, and I had nothing but road and problems all the time. So I would imagine our intent was...
Because you were showing only...
There is a basement there now. There is a basement there now.
I know, you were showing, I think utilities in the utility closet on the first floor, of some of the utilities, and that's what got me thinking about, is it gonna be, is it gonna be on a full...
Yeah, we didn't get, we didn't get the foundation plan yet. Like I was saying, the modular company does their end, and then we put our end in later. So I think we want to see what you want.
Yeah, there's just a lot of...
Yeah, we definitely want to see that the floor, the wall, all of it. And this house, namely, behind the structure.
No, I wouldn't, I mean, I wouldn't, I would keep it in pretty much conformly where it is.
It's a floor.
Yeah, just, yeah, just...
So now we don't have it, we can't see that.
So you want to state, you want to see that...
Foundation plan?
Yeah.
With the foundation. Those building things are... We do more than one parking.
Anything else? You want, you looking for?
The park, what, was the parking, the foundation plan and the...
They're gonna redo the, you're gonna show us a new parking?
Yeah, I think there's two possible variations, but I will defer to Ralph.
Bring them both in.
Yeah.
Yeah, you bring them both in.
It'd be nice, I've seen more open space instead of hard surfaces.
Right.
Then we would, obviously, it's a much better selling point. I'm not a big fan of concrete or hot stuff.
And you see, what you put before us is what you're supposed to do, right?
Yes.
See the front of this?
Yeah.
See the sides of this?
Yes.
This is all vinyl?
Yes.
Does the vinyl look like this?
The front does. The front facade does, yes.
It's gonna look like this, the vinyl?
Yes. It's a composite cedar shingle. It's three times the price of regular one.
It's a shingles, that's why I...
Yeah, that's how they come.
So that's a shingle?
The front's every same, it's plastic shingle.
Right.
Right, but on the sides, most houses, including my own, they put a nice facade on the front and then on the sides. There's actually a lot of them, and there's several that have just been done recently that look just like it. It's amazing. It's a great product, and it looks nice, but incredibly, it's three times as expensive.
And these are gonna be two-bedroom units?
Yes, two-bedroom with the, yep, on the second floor.
Any other questions?
Is three parking spaces all that's required? Is three parking spaces all that's required for a...
Yes.
Jim, can I get this to a parking?
Oh, sure, it's 325 Central Street. In Saguas, SCU. Sorry, 01906. It's not, it's just gonna be for central air. Minimum, it'll be a pull-down, it's not, not enough open walk-up. Yeah, the access, because you're gonna have the HVAC up there. They're getting cooling, HVAC, heating and cooling system. Like the condenser. Have the HVAC.
Back. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Yeah, none, we'll close the hearing, close the favor. Open it for those in opposition. Is anyone here in opposition? Anyone in opposition? All right, seeing none, we will close the hearing. What is your wish? Would it continue this?
Yes.
And exactly what are the stipulations that we want to see at the next meeting? We want to see optional parking plans?
Do you want to see the parking, it's staked out? And you want to see the front of the building, the foundation, is there a parking?
And the porch, with the porch on, that's what I... You got that?
At the elevation height, right?
What's the next meeting? May 7th? Okay.
Mrs. Curley, for a consideration, you want to go about... Yes. Mrs. Carles.
Agree to continue?
Agree to continue?
McElwatt.
Yes, continue.
Mrs. Curley.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Cole.
Yes. Today is 4/16. Okay, the last case tonight is... To allow the reconfiguration of lot 034, Linus Sessis Mav, 036, whose original configuration, basically separating 69 and 73. For the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on a lot containing 3,130 square feet with less than the required frontage, front setback, and right-side yard in number 69, for the two-family dwelling to be built on a lot containing 4,507 square feet in the A4 apartment house district. Now, last time, I don't think there were plans, was that...
There was, but I think what did Mrs. Giussono, or I think another, someone else, so I provided, Dave Wachoff did the drawing. And I think we brought some to you.
This was the one we were concerned about, the flooding.
Right.
Yeah, I thought she got an email about this. Could be a separate here, if you must.
Yeah, we have some emails. So what we kept was the concept of the garage under. Because the A people like covered parking, but B, there are certain constraints if you're on a floodplain with respect to what you can build under by FEMA regulations in terms of height, okay? So, but that doesn't preclude use of the property for parking. I think they have a theory that says, if there ever was a flood, it can go through the garage, out of the back. FEMA is satisfied with that. So one of the questions was that, but the building is at 30, this proposal is at 34 feet, even with the garage parked behind it.
Is that the building that currently is going on construction, right?
No, that, there's two lots. There's one building... There's one building being rehabbed. Yeah, single-family. That's being rehabbed.
Being worked on.
Yes, right. They have permits for that, that's a straight rehab of that building.
On that lot.
On that, right. There was a huge four-family, I have pictures of it, that used to be on the suburb. And then the board granted relief to someone to build six, have six units on the lot that was proposing the two. Again, looking at the character of the area, South Elm Street is a street much like the one we just talked about, that has mixed uses with threes, twos, and ones on lots of comparable size. I do think that this design, having learned lesson from, I think, our experience on Hawthorne Street, that people wanted a conventional two-family that could fit in in the neighborhood as opposed to, we early had a proposal of modulars, much like the ones that are over here on Liberty Street. This is a split-built home. Mr. Wachoff has built these homes before. And we think it's consistent with the character of this area. And we think in terms of the use of the lot, if you look at the street list and look at other lots that are in the area, that have two families on them, that are within 10 or 12 feet, one way or the other, we go, existing two-family homes on it. The difference would be, this would be a modern home, all of the energy efficiencies, all of the protections afforded by the state building code. And we think that it works better than the proposal we had a couple of weeks ago, when I think it was Mr. Giussono who was hearing the questions about specifically the building. I think you're familiar with Dave Wachoff's work. This may be more expensive, but at the end of the day, it's a better product. People have a brighter agenda, and we believe that we fit with the neighborhood.
Well, which direction of the house is facing the street?
Facing the streets, yeah. The numbers would be on this here.
It's a little smaller, it's not as small.
There will need to be a slight slope for, yes. Which also goes to this elevation issue that FEMA has.
Well, exactly, so that puts the house in push elevation.
34 feet.
After it's being built, after the building is done, it's supposed to be about 35?
34 feet. Yeah, and because when they measure, the measure of height in the zone ordinance definition is from the mean grade of the street. So if you had a lot that goes like this, it's the mean level, the average. That's how the zone ordinance defines height, by measuring from the mean level of the street.
Well, so that definition, that means this current house, or the taller, the house being renovated now?
The single-family?
Single-family.
I'm not sure what the height is on the single-family, to be honest. Well, this has got a slope. But there's another reason that we want to maintain that, which is the sping.
It's basic, you're correct, we understand, but you also have a height issue.
That, so that, the house to the net, to, to the right of us, it will be higher than this house. The two-family that currently sits there is higher than this house.
Big, larger property or a large house?
I think it's 67 is the one that, that abuts it.
Yeah.
That's a two-family, and that sits higher than this will be. That, and that lot has, I think, 100 square feet more in total.
So it's about the size?
What's that?
In height? At 67 and 64?
No, 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 67 is the number of the street, the address, the address. You're welcome. I also brought the ward's sixth counselor down to show him the plans and to show him what I was going to do. And he was in favor of it. I spoke with some of the neighbors, I spoke with the fellow gentleman at 64, Officer Kulikowski. Him and his father Randy have lived in the neighborhood for 38 years. They said they have no opposition to it. They couldn't make it tonight, but they were for the project, they said that they'd like to see families stay in the neighborhood.
And there was an issue that Mr. Cole had raised, which I think he satisfied himself and let me know in terms of back in the chain of title, that how, when you look at lots that are combined. When the state statute treats lots held in what's called common ownership differently than lots that are in what we call separate chains of title. And so all the way down the chain of title, these were two separate lots, two separate lots. And then the city sold the lot to an individual. Who sold the lot to the person who owned this one, and that's how they came to be in common ownership, which affected what, the kind of relief that we could seek because the statute talks about lots held in common ownership. And so that, that's why the, the language about a determination we use. Because reconfigured lots, the non, these are both non-conforming properties, neither of the houses that existed met the then-replaced. You can't make the lots bigger, and they, they're always gonna be quote "non-conforming" as to that. But as to use, the uses are conforming in the district. And as I think, we, we believe it's a less intensive use than what previously been there, just a huge four-story.
So the vacant lot and the single-family?
The vacant lot was once taken by the City of Lynn.
Yes.
Yes. The City of Lynn took the lot for non-lease taxes and then ultimately deeded it to a woman who deeded it to the individual who owned one of the houses, and that's how it came to own both. And that's the individual that sold here.
I just wanna say something to the board as well, I've never been in front of the zoning board here. I've been, this is my second time, and I see a lot of people who are coming to do, to get variances. They're, they're investors who are looking to build houses and leave. We have no intention of building this house and selling this house, we plan to live in this house. Myself is gonna live on one side, my aunt is gonna live on the other, and my other sister is gonna live in the single-family house. So this is not something that we're doing to get money and see you later. I work in the city, I live in the city, my boys are, go to the YMCA in the city. So we're looking to, to stay in the community, my grandmother has lived in the community for 47 years, should love to see us nearby. So just wanna say, like, this isn't a business proposition, we're looking to, to build a home. It's very expensive right now in Lynn to buy a home, as you, as most of you probably know, it's being gentrified, which in one's perspective is a good thing because it means that the city is progressing, which, which I like. But at the same time, I, I would like to continue living in the city and, and having my, my children go through the youth programs that I was able to go through, so just wanted to put that in.
And there's a pressing need for the, the sister who's not here would be relocated from another community. I think I've lead to that in the past, and would move into the single-family that's being re-kept.
What's the siding gonna be on this house?
It's gonna be vinyl siding, it's gonna be two-tone vinyl siding. It's actually gonna, the door, it doesn't represent it there, on page two, off on the side view, there's a door missing. If you look at the plans that come out of the garage, there's a door that comes out of the side. He forgot to draw the door on it, but the front is gonna have like an overhang over it, like so you're not getting wet if you're at the front door. And then it's gonna be a two-tone color vinyl, like they're doing in a lot of the new homes, like a soft yellow and a soft beige or something like that. There's gas on the street, yes.
Any other questions?
No. I think your garage is small, I think every time you open your door, you're gonna hit the walls. I don't know, consider. If you, if you have a big truck, the only way we would be able to make it bigger is going out wider. No, no, take this out. What's that? Take this wall out.
Take the garage all the way to the, all the way to here.
Yeah. Because every time you open your door, you're, you're not, you're gonna have to really... If, if the, if the building code... It's like less than 10, if, this is 10 feet from the outside to, in a typical parking space is 10 feet, you have less than 10 feet. If the building code will allow us to, obviously we would be... You would need a door.
Parking space in the city ordinances, used to be eight and a half by 20, now it's nine by 18.
Yeah, but for an indoor, they have walls, for an indoor, they would always hit the wall as they... Which is their...
Well, the reason I think the city picked eight and a half and nine is that a typical car is not 10 feet wide.
No, no, for parking space outdoors, not for indoors.
Saying typical car?
Yeah.
So we could get a truck in here, but we could, there's outdoor spaces for two behind the, the garage.
We could potentially make it one stairway going up to create more room in the garage, and then they split off into their own, we would be open to that.
Change in the interior staircase?
Yes.
So a single door?
That goes into their own apartments, I would, I would be okay with that.
And then you'd also, you'd just need to be able to access your space back here, so you'd probably have to put one...
Is that the back, there's a slide, there's a door in the back there, slider. So you would probably just put a door over here. I, I would have no objections whatsoever to that. At least you have a wider garage.
I think it'd be more utilitarian for you. I mean, it'd be hard to get a baby out of the car.
I know, because it's only like a foot, you have to really suck it in. I would, I, I would be more than happy to do that, I would have no objection.
Since it's stick-built, Mr. Wykoff can...
He built the house across the street.
So the plot plan says, I think, 34, and this plan is 36?
No, he updated it, and if you look at the new plot plan, it's 36 by 38, the first page. This one here. Or, this one here, it's the same, it should be the same that you guys have, but updated.
The one in the file?
The original one. When he was drawn, when Mr. Wykoff was drawing the plans, he needed it to meet some type of code or something, I'm not very sure, to be honest, but...
That's good, because he was gonna have to do it if he didn't do it, so that's good. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Uh, we have, we have a letter, would you like to read it? Mr. Early?
I am writing a letter in support of the foundation. Although I have new members of the council, I am a familiar with the property at 6973 South Elm Street. We, we don't have the prior knowledge.
As well.
I am also aware that this year is probably, if I believe the ways to request security concerning the usage of the lots. I know a single-family home at 73, I believe, that's a update. The lot at 69 has been years, a large four-family house. I understand that the applicant wants to construct a new two-family at 69. I have no objection to the proposal, but I simply request you improve the neighborhood and provide a modern safe housing. Thank you for the answer, it seems to present as matter, where we shall be holding council or state.
Okay, is anybody here wishing to speak in opposition or have any questions?
We have some questions.
Just give your, your name and address.
Sure. So I'm from Lynn, and I don't live in Lynn anymore, I'm just visiting my father this week for spring break. But yes, so my parents live at 67 South Elm Street, which is adjacent to the proposed duplex. And they live in a two-family home, and they've lived at this house for over 30 years. So my parents are very familiar with the history of the lot of 69, and the two houses there. They were there when there was a very large structure, what was four-family turned to six-family. There was a lot of crime at that structure throughout the years when I was growing up. And, and I think, you know, we just have some questions. Obviously, one of the concerns is, many years ago, the city had told the people on that street, including my parents, that that lot where the proposed duplex would be built, is not buildable. That that land is adjacent to Lot B, and that a structure would not be built there. And so at that time, half of that lot, the city proposed that if my dad wanted to, he could have bought half of that lot, but he decided not to because they weren't sure how long, you know, they would live there. So I think a lot of it is just a surprise to my parents that a structure would be built on this lot. We're not per se, we don't have objections, we think, to the proposed duplex, but I think he has some questions. You know, he, I don't think he wants a lot of cars on the street. There is already across the street from the duplex, there is a multi-family house. And there are a lot of cars, I think he said the last meeting where it was not present at, he already mentioned that to a board. And so I, I think, you know, I think he would, like a family, if a house is going to live there, he would prefer for a family to live there and not for a lot of people, renters, to live there. So what, that's one of the concerns. And then I guess we have questions, and we're wondering if the setbacks to the proposed plans meet code in terms of, you know, the setbacks to the left and the right.
So, so basically what you heard from the petition today, it seems like the family, they were previously a four-family, now a two-family. Are you guys still opposing there, or I don't understand if you have a way of opposing? Do you still have some concern with that, since they're reducing what your experience was previously, past 30 years? Wish to take on that currently, after hearing this?
Well, I would say for the last many years, there was no house there.
Sure.
So.
But this is a family, it's a grandparents, it's a family, and it's a sister, I mean, it is a family.
And, and they will have a driveway, if they do park in the garage, at least if they have a second car, hopefully they would park in the driveway and not on the street.
Right, away from a four-family, the family be four, now it's a two-family. So that's a good thing, right?
Well, it depends how you look at it, it's a good thing, but I will make the same point there I said earlier that for many years, there was no house there. And...
So, actually, I don't know. That's good, that for me, maybe that the new house, it makes the... Make the, make the room better, or maybe more trouble for the neighborhood?
I, I can say this, one, the biggest plus on this is they're only two-bedroom units, so... It's not like someone's building, you know, two, three bedrooms, where which down the road would be more apt to be, you know, consist of more people. These are, basically, it's a small unit. You know, they're only 15, no, they're wide, 18 feet wide.
I think my... I think that they're good, can they do like, single-family, they have to be good for the buffer for that lot now. Not too many, and that, that is a lot, so, but...
But you're, you're a two-family next door, right?
I'm a two-family next door, yeah. I lived there.
They were all gonna live next to you?
Yeah, they did, I mean, a two-family next door.
And it's all family?
Yes, and the family.
One of the other questions I have is, so there was one owner who used to own two lots. So the way that it's broken up now, can each of the lots be sold?
Absolutely, we're creating a new lot.
Right.
We, we, we're recreating the old lot.
Right, so, so I know this is not what is presented now, but the lots could be sold. And, you know, I, so there used to be like one owner to a big plot of land, and there, there's like two lots now, so they're building it now, but it could be sold.
Absolutely.
So...
They don't get invested to build one house in, in a whole lot to demo it, so it can be split up in the future. Well, they don't have to take it to a property and turn it to one, to do one single-family, that's, that's called one structure. But I don't think in their future, 40 years, 50 years from now, they're gonna demo the house again and sell the lot. Yeah, we can't speak for them, but I just, I just don't see that from that, I mean...
No, you know, I, I fully, I, I fully agree with what you're saying, and we, we, when we do vote finally on, on projects, we don't vote, we don't vote the resume, we don't vote who the people are. It's what's best into the neighborhood, because if we make a mistake, it's gonna be there for 75 years, let's face it. So, you know, that is the bottom line, that's how I vote anyways, is it, is this good for the neighborhood or is it not good for the neighborhood? You know, and yeah, we're creating two separate lots, the plus I see is that, that, that two families, it's only got four bedrooms in it. You could have a single-family house on that lot with four bedrooms in it, and have a lot more cars and traffic and whatnot. I, I would, I would have been opposed if it was, like the one company on Lynch Street would not fit on this lot.
And, and they had two bathrooms for the two bedrooms upstairs, this one has one bathroom, a full bathroom and a half downstairs. So it doesn't look like they're maxing it out.
Yeah, so it fits, you know, it does fit the lot, I mean, I understand, I'm gonna say it's a two, the city, the city did check, and I don't know what happened way back when, but it is, this is a 100% buildable lot. So that, that, that was put to bed, it is a buildable lot. City did, did, didn't take it off their rolls at one point, and it was almost, almost went back out to bed again, believe it or not, or given, but... No, it's, I don't know, I just think this is a good compromise, I think it fits in well with, I think it'll fit in well with that neighborhood. Like I said, it's not overbuilding, it's not too big. That's all I got to say, huh?
Anything else?
Yeah, any other questions? Thank you for coming down, and...
Uh, my dad just wanted to voice his concerns.
We would like that.
Obviously, the first time I'm here, so...
Well.
We did very well.
You'll be pleased.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I would like it.
I thought for my mind, I, before I move out of Lynn, or I, after all, maybe I pass away, I do something new, you know?
Come here, yeah, you can come here, twice a week you can come, twice a month you can come here.
Yeah, you can come visit. Maybe I volunteer.
Definitely can volunteer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussions? No discussion. What is the wish of the board? We are actually close to meeting. Motion to amend, seconded. Motion by Jeanie, seconded by Floyd. Please call the roll.
Mr. Wilber?
Motion to grant.
Mr. Mapple?
Mr. Grant.
Ms. Scully? Mr. Cole?
Yes. I vote.
Mrs. Crowe's?
Yeah, motion to grant.
Thank you guys so much. Very much. We're gonna come through on our word, too. We'll see you soon, huh?
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Motion to adjourn?
Alright, thank you. Thank you guys.